Call the meeting, the August 2015 morning. Meeting of the Zoning Board of Appeals to Order. For everyone, please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. To welcome everyone to the August 2015 meeting of the Rondicoid Zoning Board of Appeals, before we get underway, just a few administrative matters to take care of. First, the fire exit is located to your left in the room. In the event of a fire, you will be notified by an announcement. If notified, please move in a calm and orderly fashion to the exits. Do not use the elevator. Use either the north or the south stairs to leave the building. The meetings are being recorded. They're also being videotaped, of course, and broadcast. When you come to the podium to speak, please state your name and your address so that Michelle, our secretary who's taking minutes for the purposes of record, will have your name and address. The minutes that she takes are not intended to be and are not a verbatim transcript of what is said. They are a record of what is said in some substance, and she keeps the minutes for us so that in the future, if there's a question about what came up, we can consult the minutes. And if further clarification is required, we can always go back to the video, but we prefer to just use the minutes. So you need to speak clearly so she knows who you are. She can record what is being said for us. When the applicant comes to the podium, the applicant should, of course, as I just got done saying, state their name and their address. Then they should pause a moment because they'll be asked to raise their right hands and swear that what they say is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. We do that so that later on, if we ascertain that statements that have been made to us, as proved to be the case in the past, were less than forthright and accurate, that appropriate steps can be taken to address any potential deception or worse that was perpetrated in the board. After the podium, after the applicant or their representative has been sworn and presented their case, the members of the board have an opportunity to pose questions or engage in discussion with the applicant if we feel a need to do so. Once that process has been completed, the case will then be opened up for public input. There's three categories of public input that have been identified so far. The first is those who wish to speak in favor of the application. The second is those who wish to speak in opposition to the application. And the third category developed a couple of years ago was somebody who just wanted to talk about it, but didn't know whether they were for it or against it, but wanted to talk about it. So the third category is if you'd like to come up and chat with us about what we're doing, you're welcome to do that with respect to that case. Once we've heard all the three categories of people with respect to each case, we then give the applicant a chance to respond to anything that was raised. And once that's completed, then the case is completed. We'll move on to the next case. We take the cases in the order that they appear on our agenda. Any cases that were adjourned from previous meetings go to the end of the docket. Once all the hearings have been conducted in the order that they appear on the agenda, we then take a brief recess, the length of which will be announced at the beginning and adhered to. Once we come back, we will then deliberate on all the cases in the order that they appear on the agenda and for which the applicant or their representative remain present. So if the first applicant has left, we would take up number two and go through the rest of the applications for whom representatives are present, and then we would go back and deal with number one and then the others for which the applicant has left. You don't have to stay for the whole meeting. If you wish to see how we resolve the case, you're welcome to stay, but there's no further input during that portion of the case. If you want to know what we decided and you haven't stayed, you're free to try and catch us on TV, or you can call in the morning after nine o'clock, and the Office of Planning and Zoning will be glad to tell you what the decision was with respect to the case. Having said all that, we will now get to the first item on our agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First item on the agenda is case number ZB 1508-1. Upon the matter of request by Ryan Cookman for an area variance to widen existing driveway with less than required side setback and exceeding maximum allowable square footage on premises 210 Laurelton Road in an R2 residential district.
Ryan Cookman, 210 Laurelton Road, Rochester, New York, 14609.
You could raise your right hand. Do you swear affirm that everything you say tonight will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay.
So what I would like to do at the property, the existing driveway is deteriorating very badly. There are deep ruts on either side from constant driving. I really don't know how old the driveway is, but it is in full need of a complete tear-out and replacement. In the process of doing this, I would like to widen the driveway to the property line on the west side of the property with the proposed zero setback, and also have a complete width of 17 feet, which exceeds the maximum frontage allowed by the town code.
And is that a function of, I mean, the maximum that's allowed, is that a function of the front width?
Yes.
All right. So if you had a wider front, you'd be allowed to have a wider driveway?
Correct.
And I noticed that the neighbors to the east from the survey, and my observation appears that their blacktop goes right up to your boundary line.
Correct.
And the neighbors to your west, their driveway is on the western side of their lot, not on the eastern side.
Yes.
So by widening your driveway and taking it up to the western edge of your property line, your driveway would be consistent with the one next door to you on the east and a number of others that I observed in the neighborhood that appeared to go right up to the edge. It would also save you having to mow that and even trying to grow grass in that little strip that
Correct.
really isn't kind of friendly to it. And it'd be easier for you to maneuver your vehicles in and out.
Yes, I have a Chevy Silverado, and it's a tight driveway to maneuver in.
I saw that. So you could park that in the back, and then other cars could get in and around it, right?
Correct.
And you want to do that to improve your property?
Yes, sir.
Make it easier in and out? Newer driveway will look better in the neighborhood?
Oh, yeah. Yep, absolutely. It's probably the worst driveway in the whole street.
It appeared to be.
This driveway will not go in front of the house, is that correct? It will only go up to the side of it?
It will, in front of the house, it will be two feet just to the, if you look at the picture there, it would go right to the edge of where the railing is for the front My initial request was to do 14 feet, and when I was getting an estimate on it, the person giving me the estimate recommended that I come back and ask for the additional three feet.
That would give you space to get out of the car without having to get on the lawn, right?
Correct.
In front? That was the idea of that extra little bit would be for exiting on the passenger side or if you're backing the driver's side?
Yes.
And you're only asking for that up to the front of the house, right?
Correct.
The other driveways in the neighborhood are mostly single-car width. Is that true? I think I noticed one driveway that was more than one width. That was a multiple, looked like a multiple-family unit that might have been past the city line. And I think the house across the street from you does have a little bit of asphalt that goes up to the steps, kind of like over the top of a sidewalk.
Yep. There are a few other further down on the street that are similar to that. There is another house that has done something similar to what I'm proposing, and they can park a car in the front and still have room to slide by with another vehicle.
You don't have a sidewalk that goes from the steps out to the front sidewalk, do you?
No.
So in widening the driveway, and if there were a car parked in the driveway in front of the house, that could utilize as part of the sidewalk?
Correct.
Have you spoken with your neighbors about it at all?
Yep. Both neighbors on either side were supportive of it. In fact, my neighbor to the east, he actually encouraged the additional request for the 17 feet. I spoke to the neighbor across the street. I'm not sure the house number on that one, but they were okay with it as well. Their biggest concern was asking my neighbor to the west if she was okay with it, and she was more than okay with it.
Had you considered using a different material for the portion of the driveway that's in front of the house, such as concrete, so that it would look more like a sidewalk?
I have not, no.
Would you consider that?
I'd really like to keep it a uniform material, just for the sake of down the road, you know, anything to do with water getting into the crack and splitting it. There are definitely concerns about that. If I'm going to do this, I'd like to do it one time and do it the right way.
I understand.
Would you consider your house typical of Laurelton Road? Pretty average, pretty typical house?
I would say so, yep.
I would agree with that. And I think when they built these houses, they measured horse and buggies, not pickup trucks.
Yeah, the house is built, my house in particular was built in 1928.
Yeah, there you go. I submit and suggest that if we were to stay on this board long enough, we would probably hear from everybody on Laurelton Road at one time or another about something. And this is unfortunate that, you know, when they built these things, they didn't think about all that. But hopefully, this will work out, and the neighbors will be happy, and a good time will be had by all.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Is there anyone here to speak in favor of this application? Anyone here to speak in opposition to this application? Anyone who'd like to come up and talk to us about it? Seeing none, we'll close the hearing with respect to this case. Thank you, Mr. Cookman, and have a good evening.
Thank you, you too.
Next item on the agenda is case number ZB 1508-2. Upon the matter of request by Donald and Donna Cobb for an area variance to construct a rear deck with less than required side setback on premises 139 Rawlinson Road in an R1 residential district.
You're welcome to the podium. Actually, I think you're the applicant.
Well, it's only because...
You signed everything.
Okay. We're asking...
Your names, please, and then your address.
Donald Cobb, 139 Rawlinson Road.
And Donna Cobb.
14607.
And Donna Cobb.
Raise your right hands, please. Swear affirm that everything you say tonight will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Okay. Now, if you'd tell us what you're looking for.
Okay, you guys have the drawing, but we wanted to bring a deck out from the side...
Pull that microphone closer to you.
Yeah. We wanted to bring the deck out. There's a side, there's a window in our dining room and a little alcove, and the window is very useless. It's not original. Our house was built in '25. And we thought it would be a perfect place to put the door and then make the deck out. And we wanted to end at the edge of the house, but I guess the law says that that would make it too close, even though the house is there. I guess it doesn't matter. When the house was built, that was acceptable, that the outside structure has to be at least five feet, something like that, from the property line. So if we come in two feet and don't make it at the edge of the house, we think it not only will not look good, but it'll cut down on a lot of space, and it will cut down on the width the entire way down.
So I think what you're saying is that if you continue down the line of the house, you maximize the utilizable space of the deck, and you don't lose anything. But if you come in two feet, you aren't going to be able to utilize as much space on the deck, and nothing's really gained because that two-feet space that the deck could be over, that it isn't over, isn't really useful for much at all.
Yeah, that's correct.
I thought so. Okay. All right.
Go ahead.
And the five feet...
That's what she said.
Yeah, and the five-feet requirement is, came into existence, I believe, after the house was built, right?
So the requirement for the side setback is 10% of the width of a lot, which would be seven feet by today's code. And the house was constructed, so it's pre-existing non-conforming, and so it doesn't have the current seven-foot setback. The existing outside frame of the house doesn't meet that minimum side setback, which is why they need the two-foot variance.
Okay.
Just another note that the five-foot minimum setback that's required for New York State Building Code is being met with this design.
All right.
The other thing I noticed, if I may interrupt, this has got a very funny lot setup in reference to the side that's on the, of the driveway. It's like they had a half a lot, and they gave it to you when they built the house?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's correct.
Because most of the lots in that area are about 50 to 60 feet.
Yeah, from what I understand, that the neighbors next door to us, when they built their house, there were three lots there, and so they split the middle lot with our owners.
Right, okay. That's what it looks like.
Our house is older and was there before, house on either side. So, and there are several houses on our street that the people own double lots. You can even see the beginning of a driveway where it should have been a house.
Right.
But they, it's a very nice situation because they have a huge side yard.
So in the event if it was a typical house in that neighborhood which had about a 50-foot wide lot, the five feet would be accurate and correct?
Yes, it would.
So that goes to your idea?
Mm-hmm. Oh, we also have a letter from the neighbor who will be most affected by it.
If you hand it to them and pass it around.
We have talked to neighbors on either side. Neither one has a concern about it, and we particularly wanted you to hear from the one which would be most affected since he's on that side. But they don't have any problem with it at all, so. He wrote a little note.
And that's the neighbor with the steel shed that's up pretty close to your property?
Yeah.
That's correct, yes.
Right. But he didn't put it there. It was a label.
Oh, I figured that.
They just moved in.
It's always helpful that we have a letter from, looks like Daniel and...
Clay.
Dante Clay?
Oh, her name is Renee. Does it say her name? I thought he just wrote it, but it's Daniel Clay.
Oh, that's his printing of, okay.
Yeah.
It's Daniel Clay, yes, who, he's at 145 Rawlinson Road. There was no objection to the deck being built even to the side of the house of Mr. and Mrs. Don Cobb, and that's been presented and is being passed around to the board. All right. Any other questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, is there anyone here who would like to speak in favor of this application? Anyone here who'd like to speak in opposition to this application? Anyone who'd like to come up and talk to us about it? Seeing none, we'll close the hearing. Thank you very much. Have a wonderful evening. Next item.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to ask for a motion to remove the item from the agenda.
I'll make that motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Six votes in favor, no opposed, one abstention.
Thank you. Next item is case number ZB 1507-8. Upon request by Joe DeLisandro for an area variance to maintain an existing six-foot-high side yard fence exceeding maximum allowable height on premises 45 Beach Terrace in an R2 residential district.
Carl Smothers, 45 Beach Terrace.
If you could both raise your right hands. Do you swear affirm that you'll tell that everything you say tonight will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
So you'd like to have a little privacy in your fishbowl lot?
Yes, sir. And we just closed down the house on July 22. There was a pretty extensive fire at that particular house, and there was a couple that actually just bought the house to flip it. They didn't live in it, and they pretty much put the fence in there. And we pretty much bought the house with the existing hearing already set.
So the, did you buy it from this Joe DeLisandro?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. So he's the one who put the fence up?
Yes.
In the condition that it's in, where it's in, with the photos that were attached and what I saw when I went there last month?
Yes, sir, right.
And the purpose of that, obviously, was to give you some privacy in an area of your yard. I see you have a young child with you?
Yes, sir. And we got a baby girl on the way as well.
I wasn't going to ask about that. Never do, but comes as no surprise.
Yeah.
All right? So you'd like an area for the, and that area provides an opportunity for your children to play outside without having to worry about being hit by a car, or observed by people, or taken, and...
Exactly, especially because it's right on that little V.
Yeah, it's a V.
Like, well, the bottom of an A, or however you want to describe it.
Yeah, you're like on a point.
Yes, yes, sir.
And without that fence, that anybody can see anything you're doing anywhere, anytime?
Yes.
Correct.
Okay.
No questions?
Mr. Hammond?
No, I don't have any questions.
Any questions? All right. I don't see any questions, other comments from the board. Is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor of the application? Is there anyone here that would like to speak in opposition to the application? Anyone who'd like to talk to us about it? Seeing none, we'll close the hearing with respect to this case, and we will adjourn for three minutes to 7:28.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. You sure it's not?
Seeing none, we'll close the hearing with respect to this case, and we will adjourn for three minutes to 7:28.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.